Said, this evening, we will revisit a conversation which we first started to have in July. As we all know, our district has had a plan in place since the summer and we were ready to implement. That plan was developed throughout the spring and summer and it consisted of two learning models, the hybrid model and the full distance learning model. We started the school year with the full distance learning for the duration of the first trimester. Now that San Mateo County is under the red tier, meaning that we can come back to in-person learning. And as the end, as the end of the first trimester gets closer, we are revisiting that conversation of what and when we can resume in-person teaching and learning. To start the evening, we will hear from several district administrators, all of whom led some of our subcommittee work during the spring and summer from May through July. While many of us are already familiar with how in-person teaching and learning will take place under a plan, this refresher is important for tonight's board discussion. As the board holds its discussion this evening, I want to again reaffirm what our board president Janet Lawson said. I also ask for respect and civility from all of us. We've heard from many community members at the past meetings and it's important that we continue to respect each of our opinions. That includes the opinions expressed while addressing the board or any comments in the chat as Janet mentioned. In the end, remember that all of us have the same goal, a safe environment for teaching and learning to take place and we're all in this together. So with that being said, let's start with the presentation this evening. And I'd have, Wendy, if you can be the host and start looking us through this. And as I stated previously, if you want to bring this up, go to our agenda, it's available for you to look at it on your device. So this is a wonderful graphic that we have for reopening up our schools in the River City School District and tonight this is board study session as you all are aware of. So this is just a timeline of where we've been and where we're going. So we started back with this coronavirus back in January 29th, when we were all alerted throughout the county that this, there was this outbreak. And so the county office of education, the center for disease control and San Mateo County Public Health Department started me, started meeting with school district superintendents, other elected officials with the county to let them aware of what was happening. From January through March 13th, up to that day of notification that we were going to start at home learning on March 16th through January and March, it was continuous updates regarding how the coronavirus spread was occurring throughout the United States and what was taking place in San Mateo County. The county office was preparing us as superintendents to get ready for at-home learning and what that would look like. During that period of time, prior to March 16th, members of the school district team started working with site principals because at this time, we needed to make sure if we were going to go to an at-home learning that all our second graders through eighth grader had a device. And remember, this was a time when teachers were not accustomed to working on distance learning using a device plus using a platform such as Google Meet. Or there was also Zoom was provided to all educators throughout the United States for free with a limited capability of how you could utilize it until I believe July 1. With that being said, we sped through to make sure the children had devices, second grade through eighth, and that we also had hotspots. We have to have for our students who did not have access to wifi. And those hotspots were put in place and donated to us by the Chan Zuckerberg Initiative. Our tech department, along with the leadership of Kyle Broba, put that piece together for us to have those hotspots and that we did have in place prior to leaving. And then we come to March 31st. And here is where the superintendent of public schools informs all the districts, we're going to continue on at-home learning through the remainder of the 2019-20 school year. As soon as we heard that that was going to continue, we needed to continue to make sure that our staff had what was needed to continue at-home learning. As many of you know, who had children preschool, TK, K, and one, there are a lot of packets going home because those children did not have access to a technology device. So we made sure that was continuing to happen with the supportive staff development, the support individuals at the district office and the support of our administrators and our teachers at our school sites that were helping us to keep this going. Then we, during that time prior to May, we went through the whole process to have our calendar ready to reopen on March, not on March, but on August 19th and provided parents with a survey about regard, returning back to school in August. From that point, from May, June and July, there was a lot of planning going on with subcommittees, which you'll hear about later to refresh your memory about what took place of how we got to the point of where we are now with distance learning through the first trimester. In August, we had a training again for teachers for that first week in August, for those who wanted to come back at their per diem rate to learn about different platforms that we were going to implement this school year. And then came September and you know, we've had the last two board meetings, which I do not need to probably remind you about, but they were quite heavily discussed, not discuss, discussed, discussed with different comments from teachers, from parents, from community members, and also our board members gave their input. And that has led us to this study session of where we're going to go from here. I want to let you all know that we have listened to all comments, listened to all questions that have been presented. And we have listened to the discussions that we've had with community and board members through each of these last two meetings and read hundreds of emails from parents and community members. So with that being said, I'm going to start the presentation that my colleagues, who I work closely with at the district office and also are some of our, we have a site administrator around here who has been working with us too, along with other site administrators that will be presenting this evening. So I believe we have the first presentation is with the health, safety facilities and all that piece, if I'm not mistaken. So yes, it is. And anything to do with the bond. So I'm going to turn this over. I believe it's either to Sarah or Michelle. So.
Thank you, Dr. Baker. I'll, I'll go ahead and start. My name is Sarah Schackle and I'm the principal of North Star Academy. I'm very excited to introduce our team. So we have Michelle Griffith, our, one of our district office personnel, we have Don Diaz, both of whom will be presenting this evening. And then also Martin Cervantes has worked with us as well, or I should say we've worked with him. So as part of the health and safety team, we are very excited to share. We've been working on this a lot over the course of the last several, several months. And I feel very confident, as I know our team does, that we are, we're highly prepared and we're ready to go. So however the board decides to vote, we're excited to support the health and safety of everyone moving forward. So just, oh, sorry, can you go back one? Thank you. Just a little bit of background about the work that we have been doing. So we started really with our facilities work, training custodians, making sure that everything was ordered in terms of PPE, that we were following CDC and CDPH guidelines and making sure that our schools were kind of secured throughout the district. And then May through August, we formed a committee, a wonderful committee with a lot of really talented members, and we really looked at understanding how all of this was going to play out when we did come back to campus. How are we going to do that safely? How are we going to look at entering and exiting of the campuses of the district office? What protocols for cleaning were we going to utilize? And we created a return to work guide, which basically outlined the health protocols that needed to be followed and currently are being followed, as well as looking at all the ways that that would work when students and staff were coming back onto campus. Throughout the summer and into this fall, we've been continuing our training. We've been preparing our classrooms, as you'll see in a, in a few minutes. And we've actually done the work of setting up some of these things that we'll need and preparing our maintenance and transportation staff. So there's been continuous work. This has been happening since March. We wanted to show you some pictures of what this will look like, so you can kind of visualize what to expect. So the first thing is how do you communicate, right? How do you let people know what the guidelines are and what rules they're expected to follow? So we've done that largely through signage. So when you come onto campus now, you'll see several different things. You'll see these signs basically indicating what the health orders are from the San Mateo County Health Officer. You'll see six-foot markings. So sometimes you'll see them with the red painted onto concrete. Sometimes they're the yellow stickers that can go on linoleum or carpet, and we have those all around campus. So whether you're waiting to come into the office or waiting to go into the bathroom, waiting in line, there's, there's markings, just as if you were at a store, so that you can gauge how far away safely that you can stand from someone. Go ahead. Thank you. We also have lots of instruction protocols around campus. So simple things like hand washing protocols are up at all of the sinks. Face covering protocols are up when you enter the campus. And then there's also several signages that relate to, you know, symptoms and what, what is okay to enter the campus and what is not. We're waiting on drop off and pickup delivery signs. So once we have those, we'll be able to create sort of confident flows of traffic around, around the campus. And then we also have been setting up sort of campus maps, what this would look like at each school. As we get into it, the, as principals, myself included, will look at our sites directly to figure out how exactly this is going to work. We have guidelines, the facilities team has guidelines for where we think it should be and we'll be coordinating with the principals to make sure that this can be set up easily on every campus. We already have some of these set up for campuses that are in use, but we'll be setting this up at all campuses when we're ready to do that. And now I'm going to hand it over to Michelle, who's going to tell us a little bit about temperature taking.
Thank you, Sarah. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Dr. Baker and board members. So in, as you can see in front of you, we are, we are setting up a system for our students and staff each day to have their temperature taken. To the right, you will see the temperature tents that will be set up, which will include our kiosk and for temperature taking. And we also have a non-contact thermometer that we have as a backup in case our kiosks are down. These temperature tents will be connected to our health waiting areas on each site. Each site will determine the best placement for the tents and the waiting area, determining how students will enter the campus. The health waiting area will be designed with a panel system. There will be privacy panels set up with cots for our students in case there is a student that has symptoms or has a temperature when they come in. Students will wait in the health waiting area, both the temperature tents and the health waiting areas will have staff inside of them so that students will be monitored and will wait in a private facility so that they can be, they can be there comfortable and awaiting for their parents to pick them up if need be. We can go ahead. Thank you, Wendy. So we are, we have been busy ordering our PPE. We have followed the guidelines from CDC for the recommended supplies that we will need. Each department will also has specific items that need to be provided. So you can see in the pictures that these are things that are right now in our warehouse and are on their way to the sites to, and the different departments so that we are ready to, to open up. Thank you. This is a partial inventory list that we have created and you can see that our warehouse is stacked full of equipment that is ready to go. We are still awaiting a few deliveries, but we are pretty much set and for what needs to be in place for when school does open. So going down to the classroom level, each, we have two different sized classrooms that we had to, we asked architects to create design so that we would make sure that the furniture that was going to be in the classrooms would be able to have the distance needed to provide that safety aspect of, of the classroom for our students and for our teachers. And so then we took these designs and you'll see on the next slide. Thank you, Wendy. That we actually created some models for our classrooms. We have a primary model that you see for you. And we know that many of our kinder classrooms do have tables, but because we could not create the most safe environment for students to sit at tables, we will be using desks. The desks will be adjusted according to the, to the height of the students. We also have in front of you a design for an upper grade classroom that much of the furniture that is not needed will be removed and stored for, for when we are able to have a full class in front of us. And then we have an, our office, our office furniture has been reorganized and so that we have created the distance in the office. We have our signage and we have our, our markings for the six-foot distance and it's a little bit difficult to see, but we have our plexiglass put up so that we can provide the personal service needed, but this, the plexiglass allows us for another layer of protection between, for, for our visitors and our staff. So I now turn this over to Don Diaz, our bond director. Thank you.
You're muted, Don. Don, you're muted. Is he able to unmute?
It looks like he's trying.
He's trying, yeah, it looks like it. And he's in the office. There he goes.
There we go. Sorry about that, people. Good evening. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So I'm going to talk about air filtration with the HVACs and what we have is MERV 13, which is the filter recommended by the CDC. You see that in the picture on the right. Those are changed quarterly. And then the documentation of that closet that has the HVAC unit in it, you can see him writing that when he changes that filter, that's inside the closet and this has been going on for a long time. So that's in each closet to document when that filter was changed. As far as the actual filtration in the classroom, if you look to the left, you'll see those photos of an air damper. Air dampers normally are about 14.8, 15% open, depending on the air balance. And now we have opened them up per CDC's guidelines of 100% outside air. Okay. So what you're looking at here is the MERV 13 filters inventory in the warehouse. Now in regards to bond construction, bond construction is separate from the school site, even though we are sharing the campus. What we have in place for compliance to follow all of the health department orders, we have safety compliance officers. They are onsite all day. They are positioned at the entrance to the construction site and they take the temperatures daily of each employee and they also have the symptom questionnaire as well as putting the phone numbers down of those employees for contact tracing. Those safety compliance officers are under the state inspectors that we have hired for the buildings. They are required to wear the mask. They were required not to share their tools and again, tracking and tracing is available should something happen. Okay. So for the next steps, we do need to hire additional custodial staff to allow us to clean the restrooms like we need to. We need to revise those cleaning schedules to make that happen. So the day matches the nights. And there's always continual training for new and current staff. That's once a month and then we would go over the COVID-19 topics, either the, as a review or any new COVID-19 topics that would come up. We also have to install the air purifiers in the classrooms and then complete the classroom setups.
Oh, wait, Wendy, go back.
Thanks. Thanks. Sorry. Hi, I'm Liz Wolf and good evening, members of the board, Dr. Baker and members of the community. First, I want to really thank the health and facilities team for all of the work that they've done and all that information about the protocols and the materials that are in place to help us feel safe as we think about returning to school. So thank you so much for that presentation. What I'm going to be showing you now is information that some of which you're pretty familiar with because we've been going over this over the past few months, but it's work that has been put together by a large number of people at the district office. Michelle, who you just heard at the health and facilities, Patricia Polino, Antonio Perez, Edna Carmona, Patricia Ortiz, Kyle Brumbaugh, who have all been part of our educational services department, who have worked on the subcommittees this past several months that we are going to again be giving you a brief overview of that work. But I also want to thank the numerous people who have been part of those ed services committees who are probably on this call tonight as well, which are our school administrators, our teachers, our classified staff and many community members. So thank you again for all of your work. And now we're going to do a quick review of kind of where we left off back in July as we brought information forward from our subcommittees about recommendations about the reopening of school. Thanks, Wendy. Now go ahead. So the proposals that our subcommittees planned, which we talked to you about back in July and which we are implementing, one of them certainly is the 100% distance learning full-time was an option at that time. But we also had given a lot of consideration and planning to a hybrid or blended version of school, which would be partially in class and partially work at home. Go ahead. The hybrid blended model is what we have not yet implemented and that was in regards to a reduced in-person class size regarding the staple cohorts of children. We know a lot more about cohorts now because we've been implementing that in some, in some schools in terms of distance learning and we'll talk about that in a minute. And then we were also looking at how to schedule during the day to accommodate our capacity for both just social distancing, physical distancing, as well as the cleaning that's needed to keep everyone safe. And the hybrid model was a combination of in-class and at-home learning experiences. And where we found ourselves when school began in August was with the 100% distance learning model and that's currently what we are implementing right now. Thanks. Next one. So the stable cohort is how to safely bring students back to campus and that's in a defined group of students, the size of which is dictated by that ability to physically distance and keep each other at least six feet apart in the classroom and/or in the primary learning setting. Go ahead. So the recommended number of students for our staple cohorts, depending on the size of the classroom are 12 to 15 students. And you saw a couple of slides ago, what that would look like in terms of the desks in the classrooms and how the students would be separated from each other during their instructional day. What the guideline also talks about is that the students need to stay together as the stable cohort and they do not move from classroom to classroom, but the teachers are able to move from classroom to classroom. So that teachers may, and the students may have more than one teacher during the instructional day, which is really in reference to middle school, but also at several of our elementary schools, teachers have compartmentalized and are either teaching language arts or math to more than one group of students. And so this would entail those teachers switching classrooms during the day to work with the different cohorts that are remaining in the same classroom. Thanks. Next one. So the hybrid model is students have five days of instruction. Two of those days are at school and three of the days are at home. Right now they have five days at home. But when we start to think about coming back, part of that time will be in-class instruction with the teacher. Thanks. Next slide. So when we are planning for grades one through eight, we are talking about cohorts of a Monday, Tuesday cohort or a Thursday, Friday cohort. Wednesday remains the same as a break for teacher planning and for students to do asynchronous work. So there would be the two separate cohorts where language arts, math, social studies, science and ELD are prioritized for their instruction while they're at school with their teacher. Next. And there are three days of at-home learning. So Wednesday is one of those days for all, both cohorts and then either Thursday, Friday or Monday, Tuesday, depending on what cohort they're in class. And during those three days, the students are participating primarily in asynchronous instruction, which we all know that word now because you've been using it for the past couple of months, where there are lessons that are prepared by teachers. And so students will be previewing material for when they come into class. They will be getting some assignments. They will also be reviewing and extending content that has been taught in class. So they will be assigned some work to follow up their in-class instruction. They can be working on some projects. Some of that work, some of that asynchronous work will contain video content, online work, paper, pencil. We're pretty familiar with what that would look like now because we've been, as I said, we've been doing this for the past couple of months. And so that would be continuing part-time for the students in grades one through eight. Some of the elective, some of the PE, some of the outreach by different specialists would also be taking place while the students are at home. And then, as you know, teachers have office hours that are available for students to check in, families to check in if needed in order to have any questions answered for the work that the students are doing asynchronously. Next slide. Over the summer, you may remember that we had a proposal from the TK and kindergarten teachers to actually run their hybrid model a little bit differently. And we would plan to continue with that. That would mean the cohorts of students would come four days a week rather than two days on and then three days off. They would come for four days. Wednesday still being a day that they would be doing asynchronous work at home. But there would be a cohort in the morning and a cohort in the afternoon. And this again is just TK through K, where students on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday and Friday, if they're in cohort A, come to school from 8:15 to 11:15. And if they're in cohort B, they come from 12 until 3 o'clock. In between these two cohorts, the room is disinfected. And then again, at the end of the day, to prepare for the next morning, the thorough cleaning takes place on Wednesdays, as with every classroom. The teachers have a 45-minute lunch and of course they've got two breaks in, a break in the morning and a break in the afternoon as well. And so because of the break time, the, there would need to be a 15-minute assignment for students to do as, as homework to comply with the minimum number of minimum number of minutes for TK and K. So that students would have either a reading assignment or some kind of follow-up assignment to do to make up for that 15 minutes of time that they have for their recess break. Next slide. So as currently in practice, so this isn't something new. This would be something that we would be continuing. All grades would have Wednesdays as planning time for the teachers with a variety of activities for students. Again, it's their asynchronous learning time. So they're working on some of their assignments that have been pushed out to them. In many cases, there are full school or grade level assemblies and special activities that are taking place. That depends a little bit on school by school. There are social emotional supports and outreach and a lot of different activities provided by different groups for, for students on Wednesdays. PE plus is available for the primary grades in live instruction on Wednesdays. And that's also allowing for the thorough cleaning of the school site between the cohorts. So as a reminder, we saw this also over the summer that there are a certain number of minimum instructional minutes with which we must comply each day. And so as we think about returning to school, we know that the minimum number of minute requirement would need to be met. And one of the components that assures this is that teachers each day are keeping track of the assignments and the minimum number of minutes that students are receiving instruction, both synchronous and asynchronous and are certifying that each week. That's something that's been a new requirement that we've been participating in since the beginning of September. And in terms of the instructional minutes, the physical education instructional minutes that previously were the only required instructional minutes in the state of California have, have been waived, but we do still have PE taking place, if not on a daily basis, at least two or three times during the week for all of our students. Next slide. In terms of the state preschool, what the plan is for reopening the state preschool is there's two different options. As you know, we have an AM, PM option for students. And then we also have a full-time classroom. For all of these options, the class size pretty much dictates that no more than 10 children would be have enough room for their social distancing in the preschool classroom. So each class, either AM, PM or full day would have no more than 10 children with two adults per class session to support the cleaning and the sanitation of the classroom services and then surfaces. And then for the full-time, there would be an additional adult per class who would be available to provide for the breaks for the adults. And again, the cleaning and the sanitation would take place at a minimum of three times per day in the full-time classrooms. As we move into the next slide about the special education and the considerations for return in special ed, I'm going to turn this over to the director of special ed, Patricia Polino.
Good evening, everyone. Dr. Baker, board members, parents and Redwood City School district staff, including the amazing special education staff I'm working with. I'm going to name some of the programs that we offer instructional services based on students' individualized needs. So some of the services over, I'm not going to name them all. I'm going to name a few, but you have them all there for your reference. Resource specialist, special day class, deaf and hard of hearing, visually impaired, mental health, medically fragile, preschool special day class, physical therapy, speech and language, occupational therapy, adapted PE among others. Next, please. When we talk about the plan to bring students with disabilities back to school, for the resource program, we're going to follow general education guidelines that Assistant Superintendent Liz Wolfe just named, mentioned. Students receiving resource support will continue with the push-in model with instructional assistance. A research teacher will deliver pull-out services in a clear room consisting of the following. So we're going to have, when we return to school, an AB schedule. Students will come in small cohorts to the resource room. Two days a week at school, three days a week, online services and push-in services. We will be determining once reopening is closer. We're going to have discussions with the special education staff, the general education teachers and site principals as to what will be the best way to provide the push-in services. Service providers will follow the same procedures as resource specialists. They're going to have their clear room following PPE guidelines. And there will be designated areas for students to sit and work. All staff will follow PPE guidelines, including temperature check, hand washing and social, in social distancing to the extent possible. Next, please. For a special day class, mild, moderate, moderate, severe, the medium class at Clifford and for preschool, students will come to school into cohorts following schedule AB. Cohort A will come to school Monday, Tuesday. Cohort B will come to school Thursday, Friday. Wednesday will be asynchronous work with instructional assistance support. Next, please. Our medical fragile class, we're hoping to bring them four days a week, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday with Wednesday off. Instruction will take place at school during the week. Asynchronous instruction will take place on Wednesday. And about transportation, the special education department will continue working with Redwood City School District Transportation Department to determine their routes and is scheduled to follow. Transportation forms were sent to all families last week of those children receiving this service as part of their IEPs.
So as we consider what are the supports needed until we return to in-class instruction, one of the components that is taking place on a number of our school sites right now quite successfully are what we're calling both pods or hubs. So I put them both here. So one of the things that we are considering is adding or increasing the number of pods or hubs at selected sites where students are supervised and supported in their distance learning. And we are also considering special outreach to certain students. We'll talk about that in just a second. Go ahead, Wendy. So the, the hubs or the pods have at least, well, have no more than 14 students in each hub. And we would recommend that they be grouped by grade span. And the students in these hubs are participating in distance learning lessons that are designed by their current teachers. So the people who are monitoring the hubs, the adults monitoring the hubs are not certificated teachers, but they are assisting the students in keeping connected, that they're ensuring that they have access, that they're ensuring that they are engaged in it. And the next slide, I'll show you a couple of pictures of what this looks like. So we would recommend that these hubs operate on a full day, a full school day schedule. And if possible, that their students could stay for some after-school tutoring and support. We would want them to be free of charge to district students and they would be funded by the learning continuity plan that we saw last, at the last board meeting that has some additional funds for this kind of support. And we would prioritize students who are at the base side. This are getting great support from the people who are monitoring their participation. Next slide. In addition, we have heard that there are some teachers who are interested in a pilot and they are wanting to bring some of their children back prior to whenever the decision is made for the actual return to school. And who those district teachers are who are interested in proposing an earlier return and we will meet with them and talk with them a little bit about what they're thinking and about what that proposal would look like. In order for that to happen, we know that HR also need, human resources needs to meet with RCTA, our teachers' union, to establish an MOU because this would be different than bringing everybody back at the same time. Needs for a safe return at those sites and in those classrooms is in place. Next slide. In addition, we know that there are, will continue to be families who are reluctant or unwilling to send their, at this there's an eradication of the virus. We're hoping that with the information that was shared earlier with the amount of time and effort that has been put into safety procedures and be families and staff who are willing, unwilling to return at this time. And so we would need to support that and figure that out. We don't have that plan yet, but we would support that the, the families and the teachers who are requesting that full distance learning option as best we can when we better know that the actual numbers of who those families and teachers are. Next slide. So as we plan for the in-class return, we will be bringing people together. We, the subcommittee format, while it took a lot of time over the summer, was a pretty successful format in terms of making sure that people who are actually implementing the programs have a voice in what those programs look like and that there is a robust communication across the district. So we would bring together a subcommittee that's composed of administrators, teachers, classified staff and parents that would create the parameters for in-class return. And some of these parameters are set by the San Mateo County Office of Ed as well as the San Mateo County Health Guidelines. And those are available and we would take a look at those and ensure that we answer those questions carefully. So once those parameters are established, and they haven't been, so I can't tell you what they are yet, but we would bring people together to, to work on. We would also encourage schools to work with the school site councils to work within these parameters to develop a work, a return-to-work plan that works for their site. And primarily, this will be their scheduling.
100 employees did receive online training on PPE and COVID-19 about four hours between June and August. And staff has also received various guidance and handouts surrounding PPE, COVID-19, available leaves and, and so forth. And much of that is also reviewed in the return-to-work guide, which Sarah Shackle mentioned at the beginning of the presentation. And that was a multi-page document outlining all of the areas that are needed to pay attention to in the workplace, such as the proper social distancing, the fact that only two people should be in the restroom at one time, what to do when a visitor comes on campus, the types of questions to ask in terms of symptoms and directing the temperatures. We have QR codes posted on sites that, which visitors could also use their phone. So there was a large outline on exactly what employees need to pay attention to and employees sign that document. We also have a daily employee wellness survey that must be completed every day, whether people are onsite or working remotely currently. And this allows, one of my staff members in HR, Jennifer Nichols, she spends a good portion of her morning monitoring this survey to make sure that instantaneously she reaches out to the employee that mark, might mark that they have a temperature or have one of these symptoms that's outlined in the CDC. And that's tracked very carefully because there's a very large employee tracking and tracing support plan put in place and investigations. When we hear about symptoms or we learn about symptoms or people fill out their potential symptoms on the wellness survey, an immediate outreach happens, an investigation. And those that are affected receive proper communication as outlined. My staff spends many, has spent many, many, many hours on training for just this purpose because we have been working on this since the inception because we've always had staff onsite since March, primarily our classified staff in the spring, but then as people returned in all of our classifications. So this is, I feel that we're, you know, good, well-oiled machine. We learn new things every day, but we're on top of it. And then meetings with staff, Dr. Baker and I have hosted staff meetings with classified staff, with credentialed staff intermittently throughout the summer and into the fall. And then, of course, we signed MOUs agreements with our unions, both RCTA and CSCA, when we closed schools. And then again, when we started distance learning and then we continue to do so with reopening schools. Now, the next portion, we alluded to this last time, COVID testing for employees, staff. We narrowed down our choices to two potential organizations and are analyzing the final details at this time. And so in the next couple of weeks, I will be bringing you an MOU and a recommendation actually for consideration on one of these two organizations. Curative is being used by San Mateo County Office of Education for all of their employees and agreements with San Mateo County districts, including ours, are available. We are looking at some important aspects of each of these contracts. First and foremost, the result time is a critical item to consider. And whether insurance can be billed, there will be no cost to the district or the employee. And the amount of how frequent we can actually have the testing done, our recommendation right now is every two weeks for staff. And then there are different forms in which this happens. We will need assistance with registered nurses regardless. And so that's something that I will talk about in a moment. So for our next steps in human resources, as we progress forward, we're always working on something all the time in regards to employees, health, welfare, and now of course, moving forward, reopening schools. We did a lot of work in the summer. I do want to thank the HR committee to reopen schools, which was started in June, consisting of Principal Sabrina Adler at Kennedy, our trustee, Maria Diaz-Locum, Patricia Perez in HR, Erin Caicos, and our assistant principal, Kristy Jackson at Roy Cloud. Did a lot of great legwork in June because we made the assumption we were coming back and reopening schools for August until the board took different action July 22nd. So a lot of really good work was done. But moving forward, we still need to look at how families are going to make choices for their children as they progress forward. And so once we understand enrollment numbers better and we are looking at having the sites handle that in terms of reaching out to families to make that determination, and then we will look at our staffing needs. We will start with union negotiations. I am working with RCTA tomorrow morning and continuing our work with CSCA next Thursday to form a MOU. And then the staffing that we need to reconsider or might possibly be new, and I will bring this to you as a recommendation at a future board meeting, is we have to determine who will be the temperature takers and monitor the health waiting area. We do have current staff that could be viable, but we'll need to discuss this with CSCA. And then the addition of day custodians, which was already on the docket in July, if you recall, board, we pulled that from the agenda once we went to distance learning, but that is a need, as mentioned earlier. And then contracted nurses. We do have five RNs on staff in our district, but we will need more, so we recognize that. So we will need contracted nurses for the testing every two weeks. And then learning hub instructors, as Assistant Superintendent Liz Wolfe had mentioned, that will be in classrooms in Redwood City. So without further ado, I will turn the presentation over to Antonio Perez, our Director of Student Services and Assessment.
Good evening, RSC board and Dr. Baker and the Redwood City community. So based on the plan that was developed by the facilities, health and safety committee, we, that we have district expectations and protocols that will be introduced by the classroom teachers and practiced by the classroom teachers, staff and students every day at the beginning when the students return into in-person learning. So these expectations and protocols are aligned to the four pillars of, you know, health and hygiene, face covering, physical distancing and are aligned to the positive behavioral and intervention support plans that we have in all of our schools in our district, which is being respectful, responsible and safe. These expectations and protocols will be in practice as soon as the students ingress at school site and the way they ingress our school sites. These protocols also will be practiced in class when the students are on the playground and where the students are having snack or lunch at school. Next, please. So we have system in place for COVID-19 tracking and tracing. And this has been also developed using the pandemic recovery framework from the San Mateo County of Education. So our students and families will be expected to complete a wellness survey every day. And that survey will give an alert to the, to the family. So if my child is having a symptom, I rather, you know, have my child stay home today. So we'll not go to school. And this completion of this survey will help us, you know, with the tracing protocols that we have in place. completion of this survey will help us, you know, with the tracing protocols that we have in place. And of course, when our students are feeling sick at school, we will be sending the students to a supervised health waiting area, and then our parents will be contacted for the student, you know, to pick up the student up from school. Next, please. So in this section, thanks to the amazing partnership that our Director of Community Schools, Patricia Ortiz, has, you know, overseas with our partners for the after-school program, we have childcare pods or hubs that are currently happening. So the partnership with the Boys and Girls Club is currently offering these pods at Hoover in Garfield, and we're going to start soon at Taft. The REACH program is offering these learning hubs at Atlanta Selby. And for the Kennedy, Orion, and Henry IV students, the students are served at the Rep. Morton Center. We started also a program with the YMCA, and the learning pods will continue to expand through our district as you saw by our Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services. There were some pictures where our students are, you know, it was really nice visiting the pods and the hubs, how the students are performing, you know, in person. Next, please. So upon our return to schools, we will continue working with our partners, offering these services. So we are very fortunate to have these partnerships because it benefits not only our students, but our whole community. Thank you.
Would you like to continue?
Yes, I would. Thank you. And a big thank you to all the, my colleagues who presented this evening. I really appreciate all the hard work you've been doing, and thank you all so much. So you're probably wondering next steps, what's going to happen? I've been meeting with our board members. Of course, we meet at board meetings, but been meeting with them over the last few weeks, either as an individual or by twos, according to the Brown Act. So with those meetings, we have determined that this is the direction we're going to go for next steps. So we are going to launch pilot programs. Those pilot programs are going to be dependent upon those teachers who exhibited that they wanted to return to in-person learning. But before we actually implement the program, we need to have the MOU with our Teachers Union. And as Ms. Kelly said on her slide, she'll begin that process tomorrow, and they will be discussing it. We are going, going to expand the use of pods. We have flyers, I should not say flyers, but advertisements and edjoin, and we have put the the notifications in other, in other entities for where people seek employment for those people to work in the pods, so that I can expand that use throughout the district, first starting with our students who are newcomers, our students who are ELs, our students who definitely are identified by school sites that have additional supports that they do need because the principals and the teachers have noticed or have had actual conversation with parents that the students are not doing well with distance learning. The next item is that school site council will review the unique site needs for opening using district parameters. Those parameters, parameters are going to be created. And those parameters will be created soon within the next week, so that we can give direction to school administrators to work with their site council on the unique needs that they see at their school site that need to be implemented in order for us to reopen. We are going to hold an information forum with medical professionals for teachers, staff, and the board. I just need to get the dates in place, and I am, I'm very thankful and appreciative to Dr. Ketterman. We are going to hold a series of parent webinars on returning to school, the expectations, what it looks like, and answering any questions that parents may have. We will also be doing that with our staff, teachers, and classified staff. Here's the date. After many conversations, as I said, with board members, and them understanding and listening to comments from parents, to comments, comments from teachers, community members, emails, the date to reopen in person for everyone to start, come back is January 19th, 2021. At this point in time, I would like the board members to give any input that they would like to have regarding these next steps, including the January date.
Okay, so board, I can't see all of you right now. So if you, oh, there we go. Looking to find each of you. If you have questions or comments. Nobody wants to go first, huh?
So I'll just ask, and I know I did ask us a clarifying question just as Dr. Baker finished saying that January 19th will be the day where everybody is coming back. Dr. Baker, perhaps can you explain to the community what you mean by that, where everybody is coming back on January 19th?
So as we continue to move forward with the plan to reopen, I'm going to look at the unique needs that each school site has in regard to that date opening. I had thought maybe we would open in phases, but there are some school sites that would rather, and this is just, you know, initial speaking, that would rather open up at that date and maybe stagger the times when kids come to school at reopening. It could work differently at another individual school site. That's why we put in this presentation the unique needs for each school site. So it could vary, to answer your question, Cecilia.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, John. So, but that still means that parents who are not comfortable sending their children back to school have that option, right?
That's correct, and that was one of the options that was left on the slide. Yes, we still have the distance learning, as Liz alluded to in her slide.
Thank you.
Dennis?
Yeah, go ahead, Dennis. No, it's okay. I'm checking several screens, so.
Thank you. I had a follow-up question and then, or actually two follow-up questions and then some comments. So do we have, well, back up. I appreciate what I'm going to ask. There's no definitive answer because we haven't done it before, but what do we think in terms of will hybrid learning be less work, same amount of work, or more work for teachers?
It's a good question. Liz, do you want to answer that, since you've worked very closely with the teachers and staff development?
Sure. So, so Dennis, that's a great question, and this will be something that we need to figure out. Right now, we know so much more about doing distance learning, right? And so, and we've been looking forward to coming back in class. And so what does that look like to manage in-class instruction and distance learning at the same time? Because not everybody will be in class together. So maybe that TK and Kay won't have that challenge. So those are things that we'll be needing to talk about. And in terms of the distance learning component of it, what we do know is that it would be really hard for teachers to plan both, right, to be doing both in-class and asynchronous instruction that changes every day for two groups of students. So what, one option is to look at distance learning, the asynchronous work as being work, not only that's the continuation of work that they've done in class. So kids get assignments, right, that they can work on asynchronously. And right now, many of our schools have that model when they're doing the cohort model anyway. When the teachers are working with one group of students synchronously, Alilanti is a good example of this. There's another group of students that are working as a cohort asynchronously with assignments from Dreambox, Raz Kids, reading their small, you know, they're the book that they're reading for guided reading. There are things that have been assigned for them. They have a bank of things to do that they choose from to work on. But in addition to that, our staff development team is looking at creating some libraries of, of content videos. So depending on the science, possibly in the social studies work that students are doing, there may be additional videos that they can watch or, you know, lessons that can be provided. We look, are interested in capturing really high-quality lessons from across the district to prepare banks for grade levels to draw from as well. So that will be a work-in process because what we do know is that to ask people to to prepare both tracks of distance learning and synchronous instruction in, or in-class instruction would be a lot. So we, we have to figure that part out.
Okay. And then I know the answer to this, but for the audience, I think it'd be helpful to explain why we're not doing one week on and one week off, because I've been asked that question.
Do you want me to answer that, John?
You can start, and then we can have Dawn also in regard to the cleaning because of the number of students we have in our district, the number of classrooms we have in our district. So you can take it from there.
Sure. So we, that actually had been our initial proposal when we met earlier on in the summer, that we thought about the week on, week off, because we knew that that was also a model that was being practiced by a number of the districts around us. And so there are a couple of reasons that we're not recommending that at this time, and one is around the maintenance, and Don can talk about that. But the other is also around the fact that those are students who have a whole week without a teacher, right? And so for some students, that's really, although, you know, they've got good, high-quality, you know, distance learning plans that will be provided for them, and there could be some check-ins from some specialists in the office hours. But for some students to have a whole week without in-class instruction, and then everything that they're doing is asynchronous, that's, that's a lot of time. So it's for those two reasons, right? But, and then Don can talk a little bit about the, the issues around the cleaning, which was part of the decision as well.
Correct. So we would have to hire a lot of additional custodians. We would be able to probably handle it for a little while, but our responsibility is also about job burnout on the weekends for our employees, and any overtime or anything like that is, is not required. So it's all voluntary. So it's a little bit of a risk to think that you would be able to get employees on a consistent basis to be able to clean the way that we need to clean it.
Thank you. And then what was the thinking that we did not include parents in the presentation on Slide 49 with doctors?
I thought I did put parents on there. Didn't I put parents on there?
No.
Wendy, can you look at Page 49? I thought I had teachers, staff, parents, and board. No. Okay, hold on one second. In talking to Dr. Kitterman, I think she want, I have to go back to the email. I think she wanted teachers, staff, and board, and then I need to talk to her in regard to parents, that now that I remember the email.
Okay. I just think it's important that we have to bring the parents along as well.
I will mention, she, I have to look at the email, but I'm always sure if you had a rationing for it.
Okay. All right. And do you want to wait for comments later, or?
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm hoping for the board to get more input from the board, not unless.
Okay. All right, so.
Sorry, we do have, we do have a handful of comment cards, so Dr. Baker, I don't know if you're wanting comments from the board first.
I'll leave it up to you, Janet. We, we did a lot better on time than I thought we would do. So I want to, again, congratulate my colleagues. So yeah, we can go with comments now.
I mean, I, there's definitely still more clarifying questions from board members, but as far as comments and conversation, board, it's up to you. What do you guys want to do?
I think it would be helpful to have the clarifying questions first.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then, and then the public comments, and then our comments. Yeah.
Okay, that's what I was thinking too. Dennis, did you have more questions or?
No, it's good. Thank you.
So I do have another question.
Go ahead.
For the special ed students and the English learners, right now, obviously, they're the ones who are struggling perhaps the most through the distance learning. What's going to happen when we go to the hybrid model and they're only attending school two days a week with the teacher live, and then now they're going to be three days without the teacher? Are we thinking what we're going to be doing with those specific group of students?
Either, either.
You want me to respond after, Dr. Baker? Okay, so thank you for your question. The reason, trustee Marcus, that we are proposing that, we had a great process back in, in summer when we met, actually, and part of our team members were teachers. And the ideas that we heard from them were very productive in the sense of what to do when children were at home. So that the idea of the two days with a group of children and the other two days, so Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, was to promote the social distancing. So we feel that bringing children slowly in smaller groups will be better for the classroom community. Hopefully, if things get better, if cases drop, we will be able to change our course of action. But the plans that the teachers, the special education teachers are very equipped with strategies to promote also distance learning activities. So they were talking about ideas while they were working with children, probably having, now that we're working with Zoom, we're able to offer breakout rooms and opportunities for children to be also included. And again, I just want to emphasize that the reason why we're doing this is to really preserve the idea of the social distancing goes smaller and slowly into this transition back to to school. I want everyone to know that we will be working with our special ed staff in those plans.
And so if I can add to that too, Patricia, thank you for saying that. As we take a look at the success of the learning hubs or pods, depending on the space that would be available at the sites, we would want to keep those going. With people coming back, there won't be as many classroom spaces available, but if there were some spaces available, either through the, the new buildings that are being added to the size of some available classrooms, we would want to keep, potentially want to keep those learning hubs going, so that the children who are in distance learning, who are still those children who are more in need of that kind of support, would have that kind of support even when they were during their asynchronous days.
Thank you. Are there questions?
Yeah, one question I know I've seen in the chat is when will parents need to make their, so if we go with the January 19th date, which we still need to talk about that, but with your proposal on the next steps, when would parents need to make a decision whether they want full distant learning through the end of the school year, or whether they want to come back with the hybrid model, starting around January 19th?
So that's something that we will, as cabinet members discuss, we need to have that done quickly with another survey that will go out, but it's not going to be a survey that's going to be straight, very survey that's yes, no, because we cannot have all this other information in there because it muddies the waters as you, as you, as we've. So we will be doing that soon, really soon. There's another question also in regard to, I see, you know, if we go back into the purple. So my goal is to not only present a return to to reopening classrooms, but I'm also doing a waiver at the same time, just to cover us in both areas. So if we did go back into purple, we could still come in if we had the waiver.
And then, just as a clarifying point, because I do know that ventilation did when students start coming back into the classroom with the teacher. And so one of the questions was, what happens if you've got fires and smoke and low air quality days? What happens? My understanding is because you cannot keep the, the the air dampers open at a hundred percent like we need to to ventilate the room, we would need to send children home, right, for distant learning.
That's correct.
But if you could, okay, so that's that's basically what it is. Somebody was asking if you could shut them and then close up the room, which you really can't do with COVID. You've got to keep.
Relation has to continue, even though each room is, you know, we did order the purifiers for the classrooms too. So that is coming. But the purifier isn't going to be enough. And also, there are going to be county office of education guidelines on these days when there are fires and it's smoky of what needs to be done and how and the guidelines that you will follow is X. But if you determine something different in the district and say we have a lower threshold than what the guidelines do indicate, then we will submit that to the county and just say, you know, with this threshold, we understand, but we're closing anyway. Even if, you know, we're below it or above, whichever manner we decide as the Redwood City School District. But we just need to make that call out to parents right away that schools are closed, you know. It's a, I guess for lack of a term, smoke day, which is the I I think the legislature is even talking about schools having smoke days now. That they've been talking about it in Sacramento as like on the East Coast, the snow days, they're talking for California school sites to start having smoke days. So that may be part of our calendar moving forward.
And then another question, if you could speak to is with the MIRF filters, changing those out quarterly, is there an option to change them out more frequently if we determine that that's healthier? I mean, it sounds like we're also getting the air purifiers for the room, which I don't know if we talked about tonight. I know I know board members had talked to you about.
They were on one of the slides. They were on one of the slides.
Okay, they were, sorry. So I don't know, Don or Dr. Baker, if you want to talk about the MIRF filters. Anything more on that now?
Don is the expert on it, but I know right now we say quarterly. But if we wanted to go monthly, there was a question in regard to that the other day when we met with Martin regard to number one, making sure that we had the proper staff to do it on that regular basis. And number two, it had to do with the system that we have this time.
Correct. That is, that is correct. Yes, we could do it every month. But it would take more people to be able to get that done because right now the people are stretched out just doing a quarterly. So we would have to hire maybe two more people to do it every every month. It's a lot. It's a lot of units.
Are there any other questions? I do have a few, but I want to let you guys go first. Go ahead, Cecilia.
I do. And maybe I missed it, but I was under the impression that if we started slowly with TK one that their schedule will be, you know, the A and B schedule. But did I miss what was going to happen to second through eighth grade? What is going to be the start and end time? Did we talk about that?
Go ahead, Liz.
Yeah, we didn't talk about that because those are going to be the kinds of conversations that they have at their school site. So we know that there's a minimum number of minutes that they have to meet. And so that's like the basic criteria. But in terms of how that is scheduled at the site, a lot of it will have to do with the number of classes that they have and the ingress and the egress of the students, right? And so there'll be staggered times. And so that will need to be figured out by site, by the number of students, you know, the number of entry ways that they have into their sites, taking their temperatures, the kinds of tents that they have, you know, all of that. Is that your question?
Yes, thank you. And would we know maybe when we can expect school sites to give us those schedules? Because I would assume that if parents want to plan, that would be ideal.
Yeah. So I think that's super important. So I think this is what when we talk about having our plan ready to go. John, I don't remember what.
We said that when we were when we when we presented this to principals today, we said that we needed their plans because winter break, the last day for winter break is December eighteenth, and then we're on two weeks of winter break. So I need to have those plans on the eighteenth. We will would like them a little bit before, but the principals, you know, gave them to the eighteenth, you know, there's a lot on their plate. And they'll be meeting with their communities as soon as we get the parameters set. I will then turn them, review the plans, turn those plans as part of our re-entry plan that the county needs to approve and the county health department needs to approve, along with a waiver at the same time that the county office of ed needs to approve and county health department needs to approve. I'm I'm doing both tracks. They're both going to be running parallel. Does that help?
Yes, thank you.
So I had just a couple of questions on testing. And some of these have come up in the chat as well, but the good news is with the two testing options we're looking at with Stanford and curative that the idea would be, I I believe that those that testing would happen for staff on site, right? Under the guidance of our nurses or
Our nurses.
Our nurses. And then that would get billed back to the insurance for the teacher or the staff person. So one question was, what if for some reason the insurance does not pay for the test? What happens then? I'm assuming the district would need to pick up that cost, right? Okay. And I I think that needs to be a comfort for our teachers and staff to understand. I mean, I, we need to get the insurance company to pay for it.
But but Elisa, it's against the law for them to do that. So.
Yes, currently, it's against the law. Right.
Law. So that's what we were told. It's against law. So if they hiccup, you need I need to let them know right away.
Right, right.
Of course, we would pay it, but we want to make sure that we get our that we get reimbursed. And also that there's something done with that company because they are not to ask our employees for any dollars.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. So that that I just want to make sure that our employees understand because that's important, that the insurance company would be picking that. And then worst case, we we would do that, but then we'd have to immediately relook at everything we're doing because we obviously couldn't afford to do that. Okay. And then there was some question about will we be having students tested? And if you could just clarify the rules around that. I mean, I know the answer, but.
Claire Cunningham, who is the chief deputy counsel for the county office of ed and also for San Mateo County in general, reminded all the superintendents because we were, you know, emailing her like crazy on this blog. And she said, I she reminded us reminded us about the memo she sent out about three weeks ago. We cannot mandate students to get tested. We cannot require students to be tested. We can request, but we cannot require it.
And instead, we'll have a we'll have the wellness checks done at the school site and surveys that the parents are asked to sort of think about every morning, right? For their child. And you talked about that tonight. Okay. All right. Thanks. I think Janet, did you still have questions? Sorry.
No, I think I think most of my questions have been answered. Dr. Baker, one of my questions, though, is with families having to choose whether to stay in distance learning or go back into the classroom with the survey you want to put out, is there an option for families to choose that they want to stay with their current teacher, regardless of what the teacher chooses? I think we have a lot of families that will want to stay with their teacher, whether that's distance learning or in-person.
That's, you know, as Wendy went through that type of process last week during our board meeting. And there's ed law and code that we need to follow. And also there is our contract that we need to follow. So that does, it, I will not say does, I should retract that. It may, it may create, could be an issue. But we need to get the information from our teachers as we will do quickly if they are returning or if they not, if they're not returning to in-person. And then we can, at that time, indicate to schools who is returning on that date, which is now the January date, and who is not.
So will families, will parents know if the teacher has chosen to go back into the classroom before the families have to choose?
That's a good question. I don't know. I have to think about that with HR and see that's that's, you know, if someone puts a chicken with the egg or the egg with the chicken, I just saw that in a comment. That's something that we are, we're going to have to do soon and and look at that. That's a really hard one. When you're when you have ed code, you have ed code that you have to follow, and then there is a contract that you have to follow. And that's where a lot of the districts are right now that are looking at returning. And many of my colleagues, with the exception of the one maybe right to the next door to us, are looking at a January date. But then it goes into this piece about if the teacher comes back or if the teacher wants to stay on distance learning. So that's a huge conversation that it seems many of the districts within our county are grappling with right now.
Okay, thanks. I think that was the rest of my questions, but I did want to answer, there's, this has come up in the chat quite a bit. The January nineteenth date is two weeks after our winter break would end. And so that is kind of the idea that there would be that two-week quarantine period because we know that our families are going to be spending time with, you know, traveling and spending time with their families. So that the nineteenth is actually, I believe, a Tuesday, which is after the Martin Luther King holiday.
That's correct.
And we we know that, you know, we have many families that are in the high school, this high school district and this, they are planning the same opening date, I believe. They're looking at January also.
Correct.
And do we want to take public comments now? Okay, we'll go ahead.
Before you do, there's a number of people on chat that are unclear on who's coming back. So I think if we could repeat it.
What what's the question, Dennis? Is it you mean which grades?
Yeah.
So January nineteenth would be just TK K one or would it be?
We are, that's, okay, as right now, how we're seeing it is that January nineteenth would be all grades. Where and that's why we need each school community and school site council with the administrators to determine what you need needs. There may be that may alter a schedule a bit for that school community. But the plan is that everyone should return on January nineteenth. Dennis, does that help?
What? I already knew the answer. It's for the people out in the audience.
And then, you know, I'll just say that I think one of the questions that has come up in the chat and has also come up in emails and conversations that I've had with people is, you know, one of the reasons why I know you proposed January nineteenth in consultation with each of the board members before this evening. And what we had been hearing from people is that there is some concern, certainly nationally, at the state and locally, that we could see some increases in infection rates with the holidays and family gatherings and all that sort of thing. So one question is what happens come January nineteenth if we're actually seeing a spike in rates? And, you know, I don't know that if you have an answer for that. I mean, my answer as a board member would be is we're always going to have to have our pulse on what's happening with COVID, right? We don't really know. And with every day, there's new information. So I think our goal, I mean, assuming that we approve this tonight, we still need to have that conversation. But whatever date we choose, we would obviously not put on blinders. We would have to go into it as we always do with the knowledge of what's best for students, what's best for our community, our staff, and make adjustments as needed. But the idea would be whatever date we choose, that's the that's the goal. That's that's what we're moving towards unless something, you know, really different happens. I mean, at this point, it seems to kind of being steady. There is still higher rates in Redwood City and North Fair Oaks than there is in other parts of the county. And that's one of the reasons why we've been a little hesitant to move forward, I know. And in fact, that was just reconfirmed this week with the data that's come out. So with that said, we're hoping that the rates would stay the same or go down, right? And I don't know if you want to speak to that at all, Dr. Baker.
You are correct. You are correct. We don't go into it with blinders on. We will be looking at the data, you know, each week, each week, we all look at the data when it comes out on, I believe it's Friday. And then on Tuesday, there's always further information that comes out from the county regarding the data. So no, you are correct, Elisa. We not, we are not going to go through this with blinders on and keep our eye on the metrics. Or when will preschool start? Preschool will be on the same schedule that we are will be on. That would be January nineteenth. You know, not unless there's something different from the California Department of Education that does something differently within their contract because, as you know, they're funded differently than our our teachers that are TK through eighth grade. But at this time, January nineteenth, I see that coming up that there's still some confusion.
Thank you for clarifying that. So I'm bringing it back to the board now for more discussion.
Well, I guess I can go ahead and start. Dr. Baker, I don't I don't think in the presentation that's on the agenda, the next steps are not on there. So I'm going to try to remember the next steps and speak to them. But if I forget.
We can put them back up, Elise. There was a reason for doing that is that.
Yeah, right, right. You want to, sorry. Right. So I just wanted to speak to these things because I think you had asked for our feedback on this. So let me just first of all, say, you know, thank you very much to everybody who spoke today and just for all your hard work and the planning. I think tonight was really good. I know we've gotten a lot of questions about details around planning and health protocols and all of that. And I think board members had seen individual pieces of it and certainly individual parents or individual teachers and staff, but not everybody as a whole. So I think this is a really good place and it does seem like more people are comfortable with the planning that we've done and the protocols that we've set in place. So and I could just see that through some of the chats coming through and and the comments tonight. So thank you, first of all, for all of that. Specifically around the next steps, I just want to speak to, you know, the pilot program, first of all. I am definitely an advocate for this. I'm hoping that we can get some language with the unions to make this work. And just as a clarification, this would be for teachers and staff who would like to volunteer. And we would have some in-person sessions. And what's good about this is, again, we can get some very local data of how it's working and any tweaks we need to make and and, you know, be able to have teachers to teachers kind of sharing best practices and information. So I really like the pilot program idea. Very much like the use of the pods and hubs, as we've already discussed, there are definitely some students where the online distant learning is not working and we really need to support those students. So I'm really happy to see the pods and hubs we already have and those that we would be expanding. So that's that's great and really good to hear that you have eight applicants, you know, already because I know we've struggled to find some adults to actually staff some of these things. So that's great. School Skites Council, again, I'm really glad that we'll be, you know, as a district setting parameters and direction for the school site, but then school site come up with their plans under those parameters that are given for the unique needs at a school site. And I do think we heard loud and clear the last couple of weeks from parents and teacher staff asking for this. So I'm glad that we're able to accommodate this in our planning schedule. Oh, and then on the next two items with the informational forums and the virtual parent series. Again, these are things that we have been doing some, but we need to do ongoing education and really as we move towards the date of reopening in larger groups, you know, with with everybody coming back or most people coming back. You know, everybody will get a comfort level and really understand the protocols and the systems and all of that. So I really like these additions. And I'm comfortable with the January nineteenth date. And I'm comfortable with the January nineteenth date. I think that does allow us to get through the holidays and families traveling and gather, social gatherings and all that kind of stuff that we know will happen. Um, so I think that's um, a good, a good goal date for us to, to really move forward. Um, and again, I also wanna stress that uh, you know, in gathering information, this was a date that um, seemed to resonate with a lot of people. So um, I think that's so anyway, overall, I like your next steps. Um, and I would be okay with them. I'd be interested to hear how my colleagues, what they're thinking of.
Thanks, Elisa. Is there, um, I can't see you guys now, so speak up if you wanna um, have more discussion.
So question regarding the pilot program, when will that start? I know that MOU needs to take place uh, with the HR, but are we thinking of a specific day? Will this be starting before um, the winter break?
Yes. I can't name the specific date, but it will start before the winter break. Let's, we, we need to have that um, conference negotiation with our CTA and work from there, and then we can develop a date of when it will begin.
So then I'm assuming then um, those parents, parents that are in those teachers' classrooms will be notified that the teacher is choosing to go live um, and in person. And then at that point, it's gonna be their choice whether they wanna be um, part of that in-person or continue distance learning through the virtual academy?
They're going to be um, definitely, if they wanna come back in person with their teacher, or do they choose to stay in distance learning? And then we develop a plan for them in distance learning. Choose not to come back in person.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I also would like to say that I like the idea of the pods. I really think that for some students, their parents are not able to help them uh, every day. And this is one way that they can get uh, a little bit more of assistance with uh, their academics. I really like the fact that we're gonna get the school sites involved in the decision-making of some of these issues, because as you said, not all sites operate the same, and they have different needs. Um, I'm looking forward to the forums or meetings, whatever you wanna call them, uh, to be uh, provided, you know, the community with more information and answer more of their questions, I think, as we go along. And as you said this evening, we knew as the board members a lot of these things that we have talked about at some of our other meetings. And I think seeing the visuals really did help um, answer some of the questions and alleviate some of the fears that we didn't have the equipment or the PPE or whatever in place. Um, and I guess I, I also like the date of January nineteenth, because it does give us that two-week window to see if anybody's ill during that period, hopefully not. And um, I think the, the other question was um, uh, come January nineteenth, with the waiver, we still will be able to operate and open up even if um, the conditions change, correct? That's one of the things I think that's a little confusing.
That is cor- that is correct, Maria. If you have a waiver, for example, schools that have a waiver right now, if something changes, for whatever reason, and we're a different color, those schools with the waiver continue using their waiver. And the only way that one would change is in accordance with the County Department of Health indicating if the school should shut down and go to distance learning, or if the classroom should shut down, go to distance learning. That's how it's set right now. That could change, but, but, and, and there's all these different matrix, like matrices that you would look at by the County Department of Health that indicates which manner that they would possibly go.
Okay, and then I think the um, other question I think some people might have is, you said for the pods or uh, groups, they're going to be for specific students, but are we gonna have one for parents um, that may wanna join? One as well, or is it just for the needy students?
Maria?
That's the other question.
Our most vulnerable first, the most vulnerable students, we have, that are newcomer kids. And we had also said are students that um, were of special needs. Those were, were students also. And then we also had those students who were in those primary grades, those really early grades that were having difficult with the distance learning, with anxiety, not paying attention, unable to connect for those students. And then if there is space, we will open it up for other students within a range of grade spans.
Okay, and I know that we have some already out in the community. So are we putting that information also out to the parents? So that they know of the different options available? I think there may be some room in some of them, I'm not sure.
Uh, the private ones, I'm not sure what room is available. Like, for example, there's Kids Corner that is at Clifford and at Cloud. I don't know the availability that they may have. The others such as uh, PCC, that's another one who we thought it was a possibility they were going to join us maybe at some of our school sites, but for whatever reason, they determined not to, and they're using PCC. So I don't know what their availability is there. If they are still interested, I'm talking PCC, still interested, and we have the classroom spaces available, we could, you know, generate a partnership with them. If, and, and we could open it up to all parents. That, that's a whole different ballgame. That, what we're talking about right now is really uh, for those most vulnerable that I had indicated in our past meetings for the pod.
Thank you.
So um, is it okay if I go next?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Um, so first, I actually have two questions, and then I'll make my comments. Would it be possible to take the questions on the chat and convert it to FAQs, so parents know the answers?
Sure, we can do that.
Okay. And then, um, are we playing, I know uh, parents can opt out of having their uh, child tested, but are we planning to test students and staff before school opens in January?
We're planning to definitely test TAF students. We are going to suggest that they be tested. I cannot require, Dennis.
Right, right. Yeah, okay. Um, so I'm in support of opening on January nineteenth. Uh, I'd like to thank you, Dr. Baker, and your staff for all your hard work on this. I know you have worked a lot of long hours, and I appreciate it. The next comments are really with respect um, to emails I've gotten. And so, um, so I would say, I understand there's a lot of emotion on this issue. Parents that want to come back now, and parents that do not want to come back now. This is all about what risk profile you're comfortable with and/or the alternatives you have. The same issues present themselves for teachers and staff. No one is wrong in their beliefs, because this is a personal decision with many variables that each person has to sort out to make sure that they do what is most, they're most comfortable with. We all have the same goal. We want our students, teachers and staff to be safe. We need to understand that what has to happen for parents to feel safe to bring them, to bring their children back. And we need to understand what has to happen for teachers and staff to feel safe to come back. Right now, I believe a lot of teachers and staff are terrified. Hopefully, after tonight, their um, concerns will be reduced. And, and then it really is in our best interest to have as many teachers and staff come back. And I think what makes this so hard is we don't have data, like what's the long-term impact on students' health, was the long-term impact on teachers and staff health. I really like the pods and the pilot classrooms. I think pilots will help everyone get more comfortable. I do have a concern, and, and we talked about this last week, if we have a large mismatch of parents that want their child to come back, and teachers that want to come back, we'll have a huge problem. The issue is, we would not be able to hire enough teachers and staff. We could potentially have students getting a new teacher, possibly a new school, and, and I believe that would be devastating to our students. And I really think it's important for parents that, or actually, in better term, be extremely helpful to know what their teacher's gonna choose, because they may follow their teacher's lead. And then I think we need to define conditions and metrics that would cause us to not open and communicate this to all affected uh, parties, teachers, staff and parents. I appreciate there may be something we did not anticipate, and that could change all of our plans come January. But I do worry without clear expectations, we'll be right back here in January debating this all over again. And I don't think that would be healthy and good for anyone. Thank you.
Okay, Dennis. Um, anybody else? Have any thoughts?
Janet, were you gonna, I, I mean, the, the one, I'll, why don't you go ahead and speak, but I, I do have a couple of thoughts, particularly after Dennis he highlighted some things that I'd forgotten to say, but, but we haven't heard from you yet, have we?
Yeah. No, I think a lot of my thoughts have already been covered. Um, kind of the benefit of going last. Um, I, first of all, really appreciate the slide presentation. Um, it's been really helpful to see the pictures and actually see the warehouse and everything that's been put in place. And I think that's probably really helpful for staff and families to see. Um, Dr. Baker, it might be good if we can make this slide presentation available, like through your newsletter for, you know, we have two hundred and sixty-plus people tonight, but the, I think the rest of the community would um, uh, really benefit from seeing a lot of uh, that information as well. Um. I love the pods and the pilot idea, um, especially when you're talking about the pods for the newcomers, the English language learners and the special needs. Um, my question on the pods is, well, is that gonna look like what's currently happening in the pods, where these kids might not be in the same classroom? Um, but they get to stay with their teacher, and they just have a pod instructor, instructor looking over them? Is that the case?
That's the case. That's what we're hoping for. Yes.
Um. I do think it's really important, um, or, um, the continuity, the consistency of allowing our students to stay with their teacher, regardless of what their teacher chooses to do. So my recommendation would be to um, find out from this, the teachers first, what they want to do, and then allow the, the families to make that choice. Um, I think that, that's gonna, that's gonna be a big factor for a lot of our families, I believe. This is, this is an item on our agenda as a discussion, not as an action. Item at our next meeting, or um, I know you were gonna check with county council on that.
So county council said, um, at this point in time, you're these next steps for me to move forward. And at our next board meeting, it's the action item that school reopens on January nineteenth, twenty twenty one.
Uh, I think that that was all I said. Oh, I do wanna say, I really agree with Dennis on needing metrics. Um, so that, you know, come January, everybody knows, they can look at this data and know that that means we will be reopening on January nineteenth, or no, we've gone backwards and we need to pause. Um, so if there's some way we can do that, I think that would be good. Elisa, did you wanna say something?
Yeah, thanks. So I just wanna add to um, what Janet and Dennis just said. Um, that I, I do think um, as much as possible, keeping classrooms that are currently together, together. And I know that that's not gonna be possible, well, it may not be possible in totality, but I think as much as possible, we've heard loud and clear both from teachers and from parents and students that they really wanna stay together. They've made connections. And so I, I do like the idea, if it's possible to figure out a way to get that information where we know what the teacher plans on doing, we know what the parent plans on doing, and try to make those work together. And again, it, it may not work in totality, but I do think as much as possible, so we can keep those connections, let's try to do that. And then I agree with the metrics and measures. I really, you know, I know individually, we've talked to you about that. And, you know, part of the difficulty is that we've also been working with the county health, and it's not entirely clear, but I think we can come up with our own mi- metrics then, um, so people have certain around that.
And I think we ask the professionals in the medical field also to help with that.
Yeah, yeah. And so with the January nineteenth, we have, we have some time to sort of get that together, which is good. I mean, not that we'll wait till that time, but, you know, we have, we have a little time before the plan gets to put together.
So I have a, a, another kind of clarifying question, kind of comment. Um, I'm okay with the January um, data as well. But I wanna say that, of course, we may still have some special, the teachers with anxiety regarding coming back to school, right? And so I would like to know if this metrics would be something that we can see, or the teachers can see before making their decision um, to, whether they wanna continue uh, virtually or um, come back in person.
It's a good question. I will need to um, talk to some professionals in that, that this is expertise and, and see what I glean from that information and bring it back to you. I can bring it back to you. We don't have a board meeting next week, but we have one the following week, and hopefully I can um, find out. I, I posed that question to um, our chief counsel, Claire Cunningham, who works very closely with the um, Seminole County Department of Public Health, and Dr. Morrow. So um, I posed that question to her today, and we're speaking, and she was gonna take it back to that group too, to see what further information she could give me. To see, let me see what I can bring back at the next meeting.
Okay, thank you. And then teachers will then also be notified, if that's the case, so that they could um, tune in to the meeting?
Sure, teachers are always, yeah, 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 definitely. Teachers always can tune into the meeting. But if I have information, it'll be on, on the agenda. We'll put it on the agenda.
Great, thank you.
And Janet, just before we leave, I wanna take uh, this opportunity also to thank uh, Dr. Kwiatkowski, because she's been instrumental in um, uh, kept connecting me with communication with Dr. Kidderman, who is going to help with the forums for teachers and staff, and then for a forum for parents. So thank you, Mercedes, for, for that connection and for always being involved with me when I'm gleaning new information and, and learning from the medical profession.
Thanks. So um, don't know, Elisa, were you about to say something?
Yeah, just to clarify, because there's a little bit of, I think, chat um, going on that, I mean, Dr. Baker and his team is still gonna have to figure out what's possible in terms of parameters that will go out to the school sites, but that there may be instances where classrooms, you know, students and teachers really wanna stay together and are flexible if it's in-person or distant. And then there's gonna be some students' parents who really want in-person no matter what, or really want distant no matter what, and that's their preference, not the teacher. So this is where, as you can see, it gets very complicated very quickly, because it goes back to that idea that everybody has the unique need of what they want. Um, but I think it needs to be clear that, I think in whatever we do, you know, there will be options, right, at the end of the day. Particularly for the students who want either in-person or distant learning, right? Because we do need students first, and so we'll have to figure that out. But I don't know if you wanna say anything more about that, just so we're or?
Well, definitely what we need to do, and we're, we're starting out with the MOU tomorrow with our CTA. What we have to put out to next is definitely that survey to our teachers, so we know where our teachers are at this point in time. And remember, last time, what we did, it was just to a specific grade level span. This time, it's going to be to all teachers that work within our district. So it's gonna be a quick turnaround time, so that we can gather that data. Um, and then we'll have more information to work with. But in regard to the next steps, where you've got the pilot, you've got the pods, we're moving forward right now. Regardless to the next step and a return in-person plan and a waiver, I need to move those down the track together.
Well, thank you, uh, Dr. Baker. I know you put, you and your team have put um, a lot. Well, thank you, Dr. Baker. I know you've put, you and your team have put um, a lot of work and time into this. Um, even just to this presentation tonight. Um, you've been up what, since three in the morning? Um, so I think it sounds like we're all, um, the board is supportive of the January 19th. Um, and going forward with the pods and the pilots. Um, so hopefully we can get that MOU in place. And then at our next meeting, you can bring forward an action item.
Correct, correct. And I can tell you where we are with the pilot program, where we are with the expansion of pods. And then hopefully by that time, I will also have some information regarding the forum with the medical profession, professionals.
Okay, great.